I got nine o'clock, okay.
I don't think so.
Morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. At this time, we will stand and pledge allegiance to our flag. I've asked Supervisor Vanderpoel to lead us in that this morning. Please remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards.
Please join me as we salute our great flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Take up item one, our Board of Supervisor Matters, Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few items I wanted to go over. I will be speaking in Early Mart, to the Early Mart Rotary at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. I was asked to come and speak and really hopefully encourage residents in the community to get more involved in the community and what it takes for community involvement and what they can do to help improve that community. So, I really do appreciate the effort that's being put forth in Early Mart, really by a bunch of outsiders, people that are teachers at the school, live throughout the county, but participate in the community because they are involved or work there. And they're trying to spread that spirit of involvement. So, look forward to hopefully seeing some fruits of that motivational speech, right?
Absolutely.
Then, I will have a Retirement Board meeting following that at eight thirty in Visalia. And then, at ten o'clock on tomorrow morning, Grandma's House in Tulare will be having a ribbon cutting for their Math and Science Academy. And that will be followed by a special presentation honoring Kevin Blaine for all that he did for Grandma's House and in and around the Tulare community. So, I think that's a nice tribute to all that he contributed to that outstanding organization. And then, tomorrow at four o'clock in the afternoon is an International AgriCenter Board meeting for anyone who's interested in attending that. And that's all I have, just for here.
Take up item second.
Yeah, last Wednesday, we had our Task Force on Homelessness, our county task force. And we had a very interesting and I feel productive discussion from the consultant we hired, Focus Strategies. They spent the last few months going out in the community, talking with nonprofits and the different stakeholders in the community and gave a pretty thorough report. I think they identified some tangible things that we can do throughout the county, between the cities and the county. But they're still working on things. And they also did an overview of some state money that's coming down the line that Tulare County and our Homeless Alliance will be getting, what, over $2 million in one area that will help with the homeless situation. So, that was a good meeting. And then, TCAG yesterday, I'll let Kyler talk about that since he's the chair now. And tomorrow, I will be leaving for Santa Rosa to attend. I'm on the board for the Institute for Local Government. And we will be having our weekly, weekly, I wish it was weekly, yearly strategic planning session there, so that's it.
Hopefully, you'll get out of the smoke.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you. Yes, as Supervisor Shucklin said, yesterday, we had a TCAG meeting. And one of the highlights we passed unanimously, our Regional Transportation Plan, which is a twenty-year planning document that really utilizes, that we utilize to try and, you know, show where our needs are for the next, in a long-term planning. Although, it's not quite long-term planning because it gets updated every four years. So, it's fairly flexible if they didn't get something exactly right, next go around to make changes in addition. So, that's one of the policy changes that we've been advocating in Washington to try and get a change so that we don't have to do it every four years. It takes roughly three and a half years to put together. So, a four-year document that takes three and a half years to put together doesn't quite make sense for us. So, we're, we have our fingers crossed and we think that there's some movement. But we'll continue to push for, for some more reasonable timeframes as far as when that gets approved. In addition, this week, today, I have a meeting. It's the first meeting, it's a planning meeting for the proposed UC Merced Saicon Field Station, which will actually be at Circle J Ranch, right next to Saicon. This has been something that Superintendent Vaidak has been very keen on about getting a presence from UC Merced or the UCs in our communities. This would be the first-of-its-kind field station where a field station is located in the foothills. All the other field stations that the UCs have are either in higher up the hill in the mountains or on the valley floor and other type of geographic regions. So, this would be the only one that's primarily focused on the Sierra foothills. So, it's very positive, there's a lot of momentum for that. And so, this is just setting it up and making sure that there's adequate resources in place for that. And I'm looking forward to a very productive meeting today. Tomorrow, I'm hosting a town hall in Lemon Cove. I've had a few comments from some folks in the Lemon Cove area. And they, just a full disclaimer, there's nothing bad going on in Lemon Cove. This is not like a preemptive, I've had a, you know, calm people down. This is just a type of outreach, make sure we know what's going on. So, there were a few residents that they weren't, they didn't, they were like, "Why are you doing this? There's just something bad's gonna happen. They're gonna tell us like, you know, I don't know, we're gonna put a new dump there or something." So, um...
It might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, that's right. Might bring it up tomorrow. Uh, let's see, Thursday, I have, it'll be the first conference call for the NACOS Public Lands Committee. It's their leadership, so Supervisor Randy Handveldt of Tuolumne County is the chair of the Public Lands Committee, so he's calling this. And it's basically all the, all the chair and vice chairs for the various subcommittees, as well as Randy, that is serving on this. And we're looking at just the basic policy platform as far as the Public Lands Committee goes. And Randy and I had a nice chat last week. And he's very excited and ready to go as far as making sure that we get some more management for our forests. And then, next week, I have an East Coia GSA meeting on Monday.
Supervisor Renus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tomorrow, I'll be having my Upper Thule meeting up at Camp Nelson. Thank Julieta for getting this thing all put together for me. She'll be going up too with me to kind of... We didn't have this last year because we had the pier fire going on and we couldn't do the Upper Thule area. It's always good, it brings everybody together from Camp Nelson, Alpine, Honorosa, Hoyacrest, everybody in to get their concerns. And we have all the different agencies there, Highway Patrol, Al Fire, County Fire, County Roads. Like I said last week, County Roads is always a big topic. But all the resources will be up there and hopefully it'll be a good meeting. I've enjoyed doing that. I think Dennis Townsend will continue on with it. I started it, I think, about five years, six years ago. And it's been a real good, and we started the one in...
Point Puzi?
Hot Springs.
Puzi?
California Hot Springs, yeah. That's our sheriff's old hometown up there. So, do that one too later on in the year, so that's a good deal. And then, Thursday, I've got the Ag Luncheon in Porterville. And then, this weekend, my niece is getting married in Lake Tahoe, so we'll be heading up to Lake Tahoe.
Oh, too bad.
Santa Rosa, Lake Tahoe. Where are you going, Steve?
Stuck here.
So, that's all I have.
Very good.
I wouldn't say stuck, I mean, it's a county you're...
That would be if I were low dive.
Hey, it's cooling off, it's only gonna be ninety-five.
I know, exactly.
All right, my turn. So, last week, we had the Self Help Grand Opening for their new apartment complex in Dineva last Wednesday. And they are, that was, I think, forty-eight units. They're gonna build another sixty-four units. That's, they've got approval for doing that. And as always, it's such a beautiful facility, wonderful community center. They just do a great job. And so, it's always a pleasure to be able to officiate something like that. I didn't officiate, I just actually participated. We had a Airborne meeting last Thursday in Fresno. Of great interest to me was a report on wildfires. And they had some interesting shots that were taken, satellite shots. I thought most of the smoke that we've been enduring would probably become from the Ferguson Fire, which is the one closest to us near Yosemite. But actually, much of our smoke has come from the Carr Fire in the Minnesota Complex up north. And it's just amazing to watch that smoke just come down the valley from the north and then right through Parkina Straits, right on down and covering, blanketing the valley, you know, San Joaquin Valley. So, these fires have had a dramatic impact on air quality, a dramatic impact on health, you know, quality of life. And of course, our problems seem pretty small compared to people who are losing their homes and losing their lives. But it just demonstrates the far-reaching nature of these catastrophic wildfires and what they do to all of us. We will have an Executive Committee, CSEC meeting, but it's just a call-in phone, so I wanted to go anywhere this week. And then, our, the Insurance Authority meeting on Friday here. And we have, I have a Rand meeting also this week. So, busy week coming up also. So, we'll finish up with that and move on to our public comment period. Anyone who should address the Board of Matters which are not on today's agenda but within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward this time and present. Morning, Darla.
Morning Supervisor Worley, Chairman Worley, Supervisor, CAO, and County Council. I'm really happy to be here this morning. Let me set up this for a sec. I was noticed by, in the middle of the month, that we were given an honor from the State Library to be named County of the Month for our historic efforts. We also were notified that the city of Visalia was named City of the Month from the State Library as well. I'm gonna introduce you to our History Room Librarian, Jonathan Woltmeyer. And he's gonna go through our PowerPoint slides, sort of showing, actually showing you what that means for us. And it's a really interesting thing, especially those of us who are very interested in local history, like Chairman Worley and myself. I think we'll find it incredibly fascinating, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you to the Board for having us here. And again, like Darla said, California State Library selected Tulare County as its County of the Month, which is a big honor. And it's also used to highlight to the rest of the state the efforts that a lot of the local organizations, such as the ANR Mitchell History Room and the Tulare County Historical Society, the Tulare County Museum, and many more are doing to promote our history and making sure that people are aware of it. So, in August 2017, the California State Library's California History Section began the County of the Month program to better support the work of local governments and historical societies in promoting and preserving the past. Tulare County was selected for this month, August 2018. And as a result, they honor the diverse character of California's many counties while providing research tips to find out more about California history. So, the California State Library, as a result of the County of the Month program, they have produced an online twelve-page research guide available to everyone online that highlights the many historic materials about Tulare County. So, the research guide includes links to their collection that includes digitized publications, which is available on the Internet Archive. If you've never checked out the Internet Archive, fantastic. They also have links to their digital images on Calisphere, which is a website that they, that they have produced, that also, they store digital photos from statewide. And they also have images from various partner organizations, including the ANR Mitchell History Room. So, when you go there, the link goes to their photos, but our photos are on there also. And I think we have well over two thousand on there. There's a link to the California State Association of Counties. And that's kind of like a Wikipedia for county resources. And then, there are links to the ANR Mitchell History Room, Tulare County Historical Society, and the Tulare County Museum. In addition to the online components, they also have information on research tips on finding hard copy information. So, they have a catalog information file, which provides indexing and finding aids to finding Tulare County maps, deeds, postcards, menus, pamphlets, ephemera, and more. City directories, so if you want to find out who lived at your address twenty years ago, they will probably have a directory you can find out who lived there. Telephone books, map files, postcard files, and photographic files. So, three of those do have links. And basically, you will look for what you're looking for, request from the State Library, and they'll find it for you. They also have a list of Tulare County-specific subjects and resources in their catalogs. So, everything from agriculture to water is on there. And then, they have a lot of history, also a lot of demographic information. And then, finally, the research guide provides a useful list of local resources to find historical information, such as the ANR Mitchell History Room, Tulare County Historical Society, Tulare County Museum, Tulare County Clerk Recorder, California State Archives, and the California State Parks. And just a little plug for the ANR Mitchell History Room. We supplement their information with the following historic materials available to the public for free. Historic newspapers in microfilm or digital format. Our oldest newspaper is from 1859. The Historic Book Collection with a focus on local history and Californiana. Tulare County Historic Photograph Collection with over four, three thousand photos and growing. City directories and historic maps. Special collections such as the George Stewart Papers and Family Histories. And the Annie Mitchell Collection, which contains all of her notes on local history and Tulare County pioneers. And then, finally, there is some contact information for the California State Library, the ANR Mitchell History Room, and also how you can contact us. You can call us, you can email us. And then, there are links to their County of the Month.
I just wanted to point out the fun fact, if you didn't see it, that our first election in the county was actually under a tree. So, it was called, it's called the Election Tree. And you can find out information on where to locate that and take a drive out into the country. And I thought that was a fun thing to find out because with election season starting, it's up right now.
One other little fact about that particular election tree was that the monument is there. I don't know whether it's in Kyler's district or my district, it's right out there in Venice Hills. But the monument is there, actually, they didn't go back and try to rediscover the tree for a number of years, so they think it's the tree. It might have been a different tree, but it was certainly in that area that they actually...
Online, they say it's one of the trees there.
Yeah. I did happen, when I saw this information, I went, I went to the site and I looked up the photocopies or the digitized photos they had. And I was just telling some of my members here that there's some great pictures. Mike's got some great, there's some great picture there of the Hot Springs. Oh, my goodness, so many pictures. And then, even Strathmore and different, I mean, just a lot, a lot of great pictures. I was amazed at Lemon Cove, they had these amazing buildings in Lemon Cove. So, it's, I just, it's, I mean, I love local history. So, it is a great place to go look and see it, it's an honor for Tulare County to be on. And I appreciate you bringing it to the Board's attention as well. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a quick comment. I forwarded the email that I received too, to Darla. But it was kind of interesting, I thought to myself, what a prestigious honor. I've been on here ten years and we've never been named the County of the Month or the County Library of the Month. And then, I realized the award just started in August of seventeen, so... But, but still, it's an amazing honor. We are one of the first twelve counties or thirteen counties to be honored. And I think that's a real testament to the preservation of history that we do have in our county. I think that's pretty phenomenal. I like the choice of words used in the presentation. What is ephemera? I've never heard of that word.
Ephemera are materials used for promotional purposes.
Okay.
Flyers, you know, things like that.
Okay, so you learn something new every day. And I consider myself edumacated. And then, I thought it was kind of funny that there was a specific link to the Tulare County Clerk Recorder. I find that very interesting because he is a piece of history. So, you know, being as old as Rollin' Hill is, it's appropriate there's a specific link.
A living fault.
But given that, congratulations on this award. And I think you do a fantastic job preserving history. But I think it's even more deserving of an award, what you do to be a real resource in the community and involve youth and bring in nonincorporated communities that really don't have any other resources. So, as far, if I was going to give an award to any library in the state of California for what they do, it would be Tulare County, not just for history, but for those reasons. Thank you, Darla, for all you do.
You're welcome. This actually isn't an award just for the library, it's for all our historic preservation community here. So, it is the Historical Society, the museums that are local throughout. Surprisingly, I walked to the museum board meeting and I was getting excited about mentioning this to them because I thought it came only to us. And they said they got emails, and then the Historical Society said they got emails. And so, I'm really glad that, and you guys all got emails, not just the CAO's office. So, I'm glad that we are being recognized, that we are a community that preserves our history and that we hope to be sort of a leader in that and with our museum and our library who work so well together.
One other thing, there was another, there were two polling places to start the county. One was at the Lexington Tree, the other was in Pool, was Pool's Ferry in Reedley. And the other interesting fact about Tulare County was that almost all of Fresno County, all of Inyo County, all of Kern, or Kings County, a big chunk of Kern was all part of the original Tulare County, it was formed in 1852. So, it was a huge county. Well, it was broken off, Mariposa was even bigger, it was broken off of Mariposa. But when it was done so, it was, it was a huge mass, so... And my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather was the supervisor on the board in 1859. And Eric found a, an article in the paper that was published in the local paper, probably founded at the Annie Mitchell Library, that was published in 1860. It says, "J.W. Worthley, if you do not appear at the next meeting, your seat will be considered vacated." That was in 1860, so I think he was, I think it was vacated. But he lived in, he lived, he lived, he lived outside of what is now Porterville. And, you know, so even getting from there to Visalia, this is before any kind of a road system was in place, this is 1859 now, 1860, was probably a very difficult thing to accomplish. So, anyway, great, really appreciate that you bring it to our attention.
And you all thought this was gonna be a short meeting, maybe?
Well, local history has a way of kind of carrying on. Okay, thanks so much, appreciate it.
It's great.
Thank you, Darla.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? If not, we will close the public comment, take up our consent calendar. Item number seven is off calendar, we brought back at a later time. Anything else the Board members wishes to handle separately or members of the public?
I will approve of consent count.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. That will take us to our one untimed item. Renan, glad to see you here. It's a request on the Resource Management Agency to approve and award the contract to the least responsive and responsible bidder, DOD, construction of Bakersfield, formerly part of Tulare County.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, Hernan Beltran, Chief Engineer with the Resource Management Agency. Today, I'm here to request that your Board award contract for construction of the 2017 Community Improvement Project Phase Three. This project that I'm asking, that we're requesting for award is part of the, it's part of a bigger, it's part of a smaller project, part of a bigger project. Project is identified in the 2017 County Transportation Improvement Program, which we refer to as the 2017 CTIP. The CTIP is an annually-approved program for transportation projects, the majority being road projects. The program includes new projects to begin construction and projects that would be constructed during the program, which usually, which usually fall within the fiscal year. The 2017 CTIP was approved by your Board on January of 2017. It identified twenty-eight distinct projects with a total estimated construction cost of approximately 4.3. Revenue sources for this project includes local measure our program funds and state and federal funds. CTIP benefits, the goal of the program is to improve transportation infrastructure by identifying projects that would enhance safety and security of the public, promote economic well-being by creating public value, and includes major reconstruction and road rehabilitation projects. The slide, next slide shows a map of all the projects, where all the projects are located. A quick update on the twenty-eight projects. Twenty, twenty of the twenty-eight projects have been completed. These projects consist of road rehabilitation, school safety, and sidewalk improvement projects. Six, six of the twenty-eight projects are currently in design. Two of these projects are considered AT, well, they're funded by Active Transportation Program. They're ATP project. The first project is located in the community of Allenworth. Construction for this project is anticipated to start this fall. The second project is the Woodville Project. Construction for this project is summer of 2019. The remaining four projects in the, in the design are currently in design and are at various stages and are scheduled to go to construction in, in summer, by summer of 2019. The last two projects that are remaining, the projects highlighted in green there are the Ivanhoe and Goshen, they're located in those communities. These projects are ready to be awarded by the Board under this agenda item. Before I talked about the Phase Three projects, I want to just show you, I would like to take a moment and show you a few pictures of some of the 2017 CTIP-completed projects. This slide here shows, shows pictures of during and after construction of the Road 234 and Avenue 95 Intersection Improvement Project. The project consisted of widening the intersection to improve truck turn movement as well as upgrading the curb ramps to meet current ADA standards. This next slide includes pictures of the D 205, what we also, also known as Ridge Grove Drive, project. This project consists of upgrading some of the segments of existing sidewalk and curb turns to meet current ADA requirements, as well as drainage, as well as fixing some of the drainage issues that were out there along Road, along Ridge Grove Drive. In addition, this project also provided a mile overlay through town there to the Ridge Grove, to town. So, from Avenue zero to Avenue eight. This slide includes pictures of flashing beacons, a crosswalk system installed in front of the Alta Vista School in East Porterville. It also includes pictures of the speed, speed feedback sign installed near the Columbine Elementary School, located just southeast of Early Mart. One thing that I would like to note is that the 2017 CTIP includes eight additional, eight additional school safety projects located throughout the county, like the ones shown above or shown in the slide. This, this next slide includes before and after pictures of Boston Avenue. This is located in the community of Lemon Cove. This was a blade patch done by our portal road yard. Nice and black there. And finally, the next slide here, this slide there includes pictures of the Road 192 Road Rehabilitation Project. This project was just recently completed. If you've been out there along Road 192, you'll see a new, a nice black road. The work consisted of pulverizing or grinding the existing roadway and converting it to base material to then receive a new section of asphalt. Which leads us to the 2017 Improvement Project Phase Three project. This is the one we're requesting, requesting your Board to award the project. This project includes projects in the community of Goshen and Ivanhoe. The Ivanhoe project includes sidewalk drainage and pavement improvements at the intersection of Visalia and Road 159. In addition, this project will also complete the sidewalk along the north side of Visalia from the Boys and Girls Club to Manzanita Road. The Goshen project, this one consists of sidewalk and drainage improvements... The Goshen project, this one consists of sidewalk and drainage improvements along Avenue 308 between Dollar High Road and Effie Drive. So, we will have, we will now have a, once completed, we'll have a sidewalk area for kids to walk and use the over, what do you call the over, the crossing, you know, the over crossing over the ninety-nine there. So, this was, this project was identified in one of the outreach meetings that were conducted in the Goshen area. One thing that I'd like to highlight regarding the Ivanhoe project is the collaboration between RMA and the Boys and Girls Club of Sequoia. Prior to our project, Boys and Girls Club approached RMA regarding the possibilities of vacating a portion of Azalea, the portion of Azalea Avenue in front of the Boys and Girls Club, just adjacent to the vacant lot on the south side. RMA worked closely with the Boys and Girls Club to vacate the portion of Azalea and so that the club could construct a community soccer field. As part of the partnership, our engineering team provided the design of the sidewalk and the design of the sidewalk fronting the proposed soccer field and the Boys and Girls Club building. And the Boys and Girls Club were responsible for constructing the sidewalk improvements. Now that the, now that the Boys and Girls Club project is completed, our project will tie in the recently completed curb and gutter project with gutter improvement project to the existing stormy facility in the area and as well as making some ADA drainage, some ADA drainage and pavement improvements at the intersection of Azalea and Road 159. Which leads us to the bid results for this project. On June 26, your Board authorized the bid of the project and on June 26, we received two bids. And DOD construction from Bakersfield is the apparent lowest, the apparent lowest bidder for this project at $616,000, which is just under, just under our engineers estimate of $620,000. So, we did pretty good there. Project, this project is funded a hundred percent by, through Measure R local program funds. Construction for this project is anticipated to begin this September, late September, and completed by January 2019. Total project cost, total estimated project cost is $809,000. With this, I would like to request that your Board approve and award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, DOD construction from Bakersfield, California, in the amount of $616,036. Authorize the chairman to sign the contract after review and approve as informed by County Council. Allow funds and contingencies in the amount of $43,301 to cover unexpected construction conditions and authorize the Director of the Resource Management Agency or his designee to approve change orders up to that amount. With that, I will make myself available for any questions. Thank you.
Just a quick comment about what created that empty lot across the Boys and Girls Club was actually code enforcement by Tulare County of a decrepit building that had been sitting there for many, many years. And so, we tore it down at our expense. Of course, then we put the lien on the property. Taxes were not paid. Property was sold for taxes and backed lien and it was acquired by somebody who then made it available to the Boys and Girls Club. So, it has kind of a long history of it all coming together, but a great improvement for that part of the community. Any questions or comments by members? I noticed also in this case, although you say some of these projects are joint funding, in this case, it's a hundred percent funded by Measure R for this particular projects. All right? Any comments from the public? If none, we'll...
Move to approval.
Motion by Supervisor and a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Of course, I love the fact they're in District Four, but...
They're all in District Four.
But they're...
These are, these two are.
These are.
The previous one, we'll see where they land now.
But that happens sometimes.
We try to, we try to group them up when they're ready, they're finalized in design, we try to group them up, you know, to take them out to as a package. So, this one, we named it the Phase Three.
And I would certainly encourage anybody who's not driven out to Goshen to do so. It's anticipated all the ramps will be functional by the seventh of September, but even now, if you were to go out to Goshen and you were trying to go southbound to ninety-nine, you will be directed to the brand-new road system that's been constructed. It's not just the overpass, it's also Road 62 with four lanes, stoplights, and it's tremendous, tremendous improvements in the community. And we already are seeing commercial activity get underway in that community and with much more to follow. So, good things are happening in Tulare County. Okay, anything else? I believe that completes our public, our public part of the meeting. We have reached closed session, Councilor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A through D will be heard in closed session and I do expect an announcement out.
Very good. Thank you.
This is Deanne Peterson, County Council, reporting out on closed session, item A. The Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to initiate litigation. After the action is formally commenced, the title and nature of the action, the defendants, and other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the county's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more of the unserved parties or would jeopardize the county's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. The roll call vote was on the motion of District Three Supervisor Amy Shucklian, seconded by District One Supervisor Kyler Crocker, a five-zero vote. This concludes the reporting out for today.